And thank you all for being here with nine members of the board present. We'll call this meeting to order at 5:02. And tonight, the moment of silence and pledge of allegiance will be led by Mr. Norman.
Thank you, please salute our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the great republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The special question committee will convene tomorrow afternoon, Thursday, November the 9th, at 4 o'clock in the Andrew Johnson Building Boardroom. Knox County Schools will be closed for Thanksgiving holidays, November 22nd through 24th, and we hope all of our students and families and staff have a wonderful break. Board members, as Dr. Rodney Russell explained in our work session, we will need to approve the collaborative conferencing management team by December 1st. So in light of that fact, we do not have another voting meeting scheduled prior to that date. So without objection, I'm scheduling a special called meeting at 4:30, just prior to our end of the month work session on Monday, November 27th. Commissioner Dave Wright, we want to recognize him way back there in the back. Thank you for being here, as we recognize our elected officials. Is there anyone else that I missed? If not, we'll move into some changes to the agenda. A reminder that a request was made at our work session for a date on the agreement with KUB referenced in item 9C3 to be changed to July 1st, 2017. That change is already noted on your agenda. Also, I asked Ms. Hill and Ms. Owen to report TLN and class information tonight, and you will see those items noted as 7 and 8. They will need to be added upon approval of our agenda. Also, it was brought to my attention today that a correction needs to be made to item 9C10 on the internal school fund, excuse me, on the consent agenda. Fairmont Primary School is requesting to purchase technology using internal school funds, and on the attachment, it is indicated the school would be using coupon book monies. This request was wrong due to a clerical error, and the actual funding will be used, will be coming from the town of Fairmont and the PTA. Both donations will be under $10,000, so they will not need separate board approval. But I wanted to note this correction prior to your consideration of this item and let you know the attachment has been corrected. You will recall from our work session that I will ask for your approval on my appointments to the special question committee on item 13B. Ms. Fugit had volunteered to serve but has since discovered that she cannot be at the committee meeting scheduled for tomorrow. So Ms. Dethridge has graciously agreed and volunteered to serve in her place. So I will be asking the board to approve my appointments of Ms. Dethridge and Ms. Owen and myself, along with the KCEA president, Tanya Coats, and teachers, Robert Mitchell of Austin East Magnet High School and Isaac Standridge of Chrisdenberry Elementary School. Are there other changes? Mr. Norman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to withdraw policy I-100 and J-100 to move those back to the Policy Review Committee.
Thank you. Ms. Owen, do you have a change to the agenda?
I would like to pull item C7 from the consent agenda for consideration separately. It is the convention center agreement using coupon book dollars.
Thank you. You've heard those changes to the agenda, so do we have a motion to approve the agenda? Motion made by Ms. Roundtree.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Norman. All in favor of the changes to the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries. Okay, the next item up is our high school representatives, and we have two very special recognitions tonight. And I will ask our student board representative, Kinley Coats, to introduce and share information about our high school representatives. Before she starts, though, I just want to brag on her and say how impressed our selection committee was with Kinsey's proposal of this new avenue of communication between herself and all of the high schools in our district. It is a wonderful idea for making sure the board is aware and up to date on student concerns and opinions. And also, as Ms. Coats introduces each representative, we want to get photographs of each one of them with their board member and the superintendent. So please come forward as you're introduced. Ms. Coats?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to start out with, trying to get my microphone to work. So first off, I want to recognize Career Magnet Academy's high school representative, Heidi Brady. I would like to say a couple of things before we get everybody to come up about how wonderful all of these students are that are going to be coming up. These students have been selected by their principals to provide me specific insight into the unique needs of their individual school so that I can effectively relay information to and from the board in regard to student concerns or ideas. I created this position in order to facilitate communication between all students throughout our district and provide each high school the opportunity for their individual voices to be heard at the board level. The student representatives' responsibilities will be, one, to communicate student concerns to me directly so that I can inform the board of such concerns; two, to inform students at their school of board policies impacting students and gather feedback to relay back to me; and, third, to empower students by encouraging them to voice their ideas and encourage students to be involved in their educational decisions; and, four, to be a leader in their school and their community. So we will now recognize the 15 amazing students that have been selected to work with me for the remainder of the year. So I would like to start out recognizing Career Magnet Academy Heidi Brady. She served as student ambassador for the Career Magnet Academy and student ambassador of the year for two years. She also serves as class president and has been in student council for all four years of high school. She is also an active member in her school, serving in many clubs and organizations. She plans to attend Carson Newman University with a major in. Next, I would like to recognize DJ Hearst from Carter. She is a Presidential Academic Achievement Award recipient for the past three years. Oh, one out of eight. What a time. Okay, I apologize. Heidi, would you please come forward and get your picture made? Thank you. So next up, from the same district, we're going to recognize DJ Hearst from Carter. She is a Presidential Academic Achievement Award recipient for the past three years. She's a part of National Honor Society as president and has received the Acapella Musical Theater and Stage Tech Award for the past three years. She's a two-time Ollie Singer and the president of Advanced Choir. She plans to attend either UTK or Auburn University with a major in sports journalism and a minor in theater. Let's give it up for DJ Hearst. Next, we'll be recognizing Ally Webster, who unfortunately was not able to attend tonight because she is a Gibbs High School cheerleader at the Jbury. But a couple of her accomplishments is that she is the National Honor Society president. She has maintained a 3.8 GPA throughout all of high school, and she plans to attend Carson Newman University and major in nursing. So a round of applause for her, even though she cannot make it. Next, we will recognize Lincoln Dillman from Karnes. He's a student pilot pursuing his private pilot license and has solo flight last year. Is fourth place in a national shotgun trap and skeet tournament and is an Eagle Scout. He plans to attend the Air Force Academy and study mechanical engineering. Next, we will recognize Mandy Prescott from Harden Valley Academy. She is captain of the Harden Valley volleyball team and has led her team to state for the past two years, placing third and fifth in the state. She's an accomplished volleyball player and has earned seven awards and been nominated out of five players for the Player of the Year by Prep Extra. Additionally, she has received all-state titles for throwing on her track and field team and is an active volunteer in her church and carm, serving on a mission trip to serve under privileged families this past summer. She plans to dual major in political science and business. Next, I would like to recognize Aiden Thomason from Fairmont. He's a, she's a National Merit semifinalist, AP Scholar with Distinction, and Silver Medalist on the National Spanish Exam. She's a FH, HS Daughter of the American Revolution Good Citizen Award recipient and a volunteer girl state delegate and National Honor Society secretary. She is not able to make it tonight, I believe, but still recognizing her for her representation of Fairmont High School. Next is Aiden Case, the West High School representative and full IB diploma candidate. He is a varsity soccer player, founded the West High School Programming Club, and has the highest average in web design, German II and German III, in addition to being an AP Scholar with Honor. Next, I would like to recognize Jordan Butler from Hall's High School. She's a member of math, science, and national honor societies, is the president of student government, and is a volunteer girl state delegate, and has been an all east choir participant for the past three years. She plans to attend the University of Tennessee at Knoxville and major in chemical engineering. I would also like to recognize Caroline Whitehead from Powell. She's a top-five academic student in her class for the past three years and academic athlete of the week for the past three years, and has been an all-district and were all-region soccer player for the past four years. She's also a volunteer girl state delegate. Next, I would like to recognize Bearden High School's representative, Sidney Craig. She is the senior class president, a Tennessee's girl state delegate, and elected county commissioner of her county this year. She received the Service to Humanity Award for Bearden High School, plans to pursue a pre-veterinary track in college. Next is Taryn Jackson from Central. He plays soccer, assists with the school technology, school technology in general, and aspires to found a student group to support young men both academically and behaviorally. Next, I'd like to recognize Riley Hughes, who, from Fulton, who is not able to make the meeting tonight. Next, I would like to recognize Jason Jackson from Austin East, and, DeShawn Jackson from Austin East, and he is also not able to make it tonight because he's a running back for their state heading to the playoffs and is working really hard to lead them to victory. Lastly, I would like to recognize Madison Jackson from Ellen and STEM. She is the student office assistant and interviewing, and has served on the interviewing committee for STEM for the past three years. She's a National History Day comp, has represented Tennessee in the exhibition category at the National History Day competition and plans to attend the University of Tennessee Knoxville next fall. Last but not least, Robert Feller from South Doyle High School is a graduate of the Youth Leadership Knoxville, captain of cross-country team and recipient of multiple running awards, and a member of National Honor Society. Now that we've recognized all 15 student representatives, I would like to give a thank you to all the people who made this possible. And I really look forward to working with all of you guys and am very excited for what the rest of the year is going to bring. So thank you all.
Next, we will be recognizing our reward schools. Superintendent Thomas will share some detail and introduce those schools. And once again, board members, when your school is introduced, please go forward for photos.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, and congratulations again to all of our students and also to our reward schools. Education Commissioner Candace McQueen recently announced Tennessee's 2017 reward schools, which include the top 5% of schools for academic achievement and the top 5% for student growth. These 169 schools span 60 districts across Tennessee and include seven of our own Knox County schools. Bluegrass Elementary, Gap Creek Elementary, Sequoia Elementary, and the LMN STEM Academy were designated as reward schools for performance. And East Knox County Elementary, Pleasant Ridge Elementary, and Whittle Springs Middle were designated as reward schools for progress. We are extremely proud of the hard work and dedication of all of our students, teachers, administrators, support staff at these schools and wanted to recognize you this evening. Principals and staff and students, if they're students here, as Ms. Coats calls your name, please come forward with your board member and myself. Thank you very much and congratulations.
Bluegrass Elementary? Gap Creek Elementary School? Tree School, Sequoia Elementary School?
LNN STEM Academy? The whole school? Reward Schools for Progress, East Knox Elementary School? Pleasant Ridge Elementary School? And last but certainly not least, Whittle Springs Middle School?
Okay, next, we're going to call on Ms. Owen. A lot of the members of the Board got to attend the TSBA Convention and I thought it would be beneficial for you all to hear what was done at that. So, if Ms. Owen will - I'll recognize you at this time.
During TSBA's annual convention, Board members have the opportunity to shape TSBA's message and provide direction for the Association. One of our responsibilities includes taking action on submitted resolutions, which will service the framework in developing TSBA's legislative agenda for the upcoming year. The following resolutions were discussed during the debate, during the Delegate Assembly this past weekend in Nashville. One reason that some of these are significant, I want to point out as I go, is that they passed by huge margins. Most of them with over 90%, several with 100% of the delegates voting for them. So, I will point those out, the ones that I - that had 100%. First is a resolution for funding school nurse positions. It passed by a huge majority. The resolution was that the TSBA urges the General Assembly to lower the BEP Nurse-Pupil Ratio to one nurse for every 750 students. The rationale was that school nurses can significantly improve students' health, safety, and ability to learn since they are often the only healthcare provider that a student sees on a regular basis. The current Nurse-Pupil Ratio is 1 to 3,000 students. Lowering the Nurse-Pupil Ratio will provide students with the support they need and directly impact student achievement throughout the state and reinforce the strides that have been made over the last several years. Next was a resolution regarding the release of Ten Ready Scores. It passed with 100% affirming. TSB urges the General Assembly to enact legislation to ensure students' Ten Ready Scores are returned to the system no later than two weeks after the date of submission. Part of the rationale was that each year, students go home for the summer not knowing how they performed on state mandated assessments. The student must be the ultimate beneficiary of any exam. Students must know how well they performed and where improvement is needed. Providing results prior to the end of the school year will ensure teachers, administrators, and parents have the necessary time to consult and plan for the next school year. Next was a resolution regarding funding of RTI squared positions. It also passed with 100% affirming. TSBA urges the General Assembly to amend the BEP formula to include funding for RTI. The rationale is that local boards are required to implement RTI squared framework, and this program has been hindered by the inability to fully devote personnel. The next resolution also passed with 100% in favor. The TSBA urges the General Assembly to enact legislation that places a moratorium on the State Department of Education and the State Board of Education from mandating any additional assessments from those mandated in 2016-17 school year until measures are set in place to verify that all data associated with existing assessments is accurate and timely. A rationale statement was not included, and I don't think one is needed. The next resolution passed with 99% in favor. The TSBA urges the General Assembly to enact legislation that provides districts at least 15 days to verify and correct assessment and accountability information. Further, the Department of Education must verify that the information is correct prior to the results being publicly released. The rationale is that ACT tests taken with the school count toward 95% pass rate. However, students who choose to take the tests on their own are not counted in that pass rate. Therefore, schools may be listed as failing though students had data from tests they took on their own. There were also some National School Board's resolutions for consideration, and this one passed with 98% affirming. The TSBA urges Congress to change the Family Educational Rights Privacy Act, also known as FERPA, to explicitly include student data maintained in electronic media and exclude address, telephone listing, and date and place of birth from the definition of directory information. Further, we urge Congress to require LEAs to receive parental permission before releasing directory information in all cases. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Owen. And now, Ms. Hill will report on the class session that we attended.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I'm wel - I welcome any of you that also attended to please chime in. Many of the legislative actions that were attempted this past year and will be attempted again this year match the resolutions that Ms. Owen's just read as far as being adopted from TSBA. One interesting fact that class gave us, and for those of you that don't know, class is the big four school systems that have come together. We are represented by a lobbying group in Nashville on the Hill that monitors daily while they're in session all this legislation. They are very active in speaking with our legislators and representing the interests of the largest school systems in our state. One of the subjects that they talked with us about was, they had a statistic that in Tennessee, there was $8,888,000,000 spent on education, and that's excluding federal funds. The formula and what was actually generated from the state was just a little over $6 billion. So, there was a $2 billion gap there that the school systems, for the most part, had to try to make up. And since we are the third-largest system in the state, it kind of sets into play how much money we do fall short of what a funding BEP fully. Again, that was introduced last year. It did not pass. They're going to work on it again this year. Legislation that will also be filed in 2018 addresses the cost of positions paid by districts outside of the BEP formula. The ones that were mentioned by class were the RTI and nurses specifically, which also go with the resolution. Another thing we had talked about briefly was the State Department's change to the definition of economically disadvantaged students, which has turned out to be a real financial hit to our systems. And I think that - I hope that we are getting our state DOE's attention on that and working toward getting that definition changed. Assessments was another one discussed. Legislation was filed but did not pass, allowing schools to use the ACT test instead of Ten Ready, and also to limit the number of assessments. It's anticipated it will be filed again in 2018. School bus safety filed in 2017 but not passed, requiring seat belts on school buses, requiring cameras, and allowing law enforcement officers to inspect portable electronic devices at the scene of a bus crash. And it's anticipated that all these will be introduced again in 2018. Vouchers are not going to go away, although there does seem to be somewhat of a shift in the legislature as our class people stated, they are growing weary of this. A push again to create a statewide voucher program, an empowerment scholarship program, and increase the number of students that are eligible for these special needs vouchers that are currently in place. The good news is that even though many of these were filed in 2017 and did not pass, it does state that we do have a group of legislators that are hearing the needs in public education, have not given up, and each year, we need to continue to contact them and push so that the momentum can continue. So, some of these things that are of benefit to our public school students will pass. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hill, and again, thank you, Ms. Owen. And now, Ms. Cottney.
Item 9, Consent Agenda?
Do I have a motion? Motion made by Ms. Fugit, my minds, and seconded by Ms. Horn. We'll get it together here in a minute, okay. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Item 10A, Approve Second Reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy B200, Policy Development and Adoption As Amended.
Motion made by Mr. Norman, seconded by Ms. Owen. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carries.
10B, Approve Second Reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy E170, Student Transportation Management As Amended.
Aye.
Motion made by Mr. Norman, seconded by Ms. Owen. Any discussion? Okay, Mr. Dupler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As astutely pointed out by Ms. Horn, there is a citation missing on page two of the finalized policy. Line five is what I'm looking at. That citation should be TCA 49-6-2116. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion on that? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
10C, Approve Second Reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy G390, Appointment of Hearing Officers As Amended.
Aye.
Motion made by Mr. Norman, seconded by Ms. Owen. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Item 10D, Approve Second Reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy J330, Student Guidance Program As Amended.
Aye.
Motion made by Mr. Norman, seconded by Ms. Owen. Ms. Roundtree?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have one speaker signed up for public forum to speak to this agenda item. Candace Vanister.
Hi, Candace Vanister, Knox County resident. Good evening, Madam Chair and School Board members. Many times since my son Will took his life last spring, I have been asked, "What is going on at Farragut High School?" Three suicides, one semester. I cannot speak for the other families who suffered this loss, but in my situation, I can speak about some things that were not done. In December, my son made a bad choice, which came with consequences including alternative placement in Knox County schools. According to board policy, that decision is supposed to be made at a discipline hearing consisting of a principal, a guidance counselor, and the student, with or without parents. My husband and I attended the meeting with Will's attorney. There were two assistant principals present and the Knox County Deputy Law Director. Before the meeting began, we were told the penalty would be 100 days. The decision had already been made. There was no guidance counselor in the meeting. Will was placed in the night school program for the duration of the school year, where there are no guidance counselors. There were issues regarding the severity of his suspension and the fact that admin had not followed a directive from the law director, so we appealed, twice. The Deputy Law Director advocated for Will in a meeting with the superintendent, and Will was ordered back to school in mid-February. We opted to keep Will in the night program until after spring break for academic reasons. Upon returning to school, there was still no guidance referral. Fifty-five days out of school, no guidance referral. Many behavior problems are a symptom of another issue. As a teacher, I routinely refer students to our guidance counselor as dictated by board policy, which says, "A comprehensive school counseling program should include the following: motivational guidance, behavioral guidance, and counseling on personal problems." I realize this is before the revisions of this year. Sometimes, the student is seen weekly, sometimes daily, and sometimes just a few visits take care of the issue. I make these referrals because I want to build a team around that student and give them the opportunity to meet with a counselor. This should be a best practice for all schools, particularly in high schools where risks are greater. I am disappointed that no guidance referral was made for my son. Once back at school, a teacher asked students to respond to, "I think my life is a comedy or a tragedy because..." Will responded with, "I think my life is probably a tragedy because I have many flaws that will eventually be the end of me. The tragedy that might be the end of me, like selfishness and not thinking of others. I am scared for myself that I might do something actually harmful for others." He rambles on in the paper and finishes it with, "I really messed up. I don't think I'm going to finish." I found this paper in Will's backpack the day after his memorial service. It had a grade of 38 out of 50 and a note that said, "Should have been a full half-page." The teacher has been asked about it, and she said she never intended to read that paper. The teacher has been asked about it, and she said she never intended to read that paper. The assignment had been given as an exercise and refused to read the paper when she was presented with it since that time. She said the grade was intended for a group of papers as a participation grade. I still have questions about this, but it is what I have been told. If Will was willing to put this in a paper for class and turn it in, then it is possible that he would have opened up about his ideation of suicide in the guidance counselor setting. Can I say for sure he would? No, I can't. But I certainly would have liked for him to have been given the opportunity. Maybe this graded paper without a comment, a comment made on the content, gave Will a confirmation of his ideation. Who knows? The assignment was given after already having lost a student to suicide early in the semester. Why would a teacher ask students to write on this topic without ever intending to read the content? KCS teachers are required to do two hours of suicide prevention per year, state dictated, but there was no way to know if this was being done. Last spring, I was in an in-service. The leader of my session asked people, "What are your plans for spring break?" I said that I was gonna make a big bowl of popcorn and binge-watch the required videos, bloodborne pathogens, hazardous materials, and suicide prevention. The presenter in my in-service said, "You actually watch that?" I hit play and head out to Target. I wonder how many teachers just hit play and headed out to Target. The suicide training has been changed for this school year, but it is a year too late to help my son. According to the Knox County Youth Risk Behavior Survey for 2017, twenty-one point three percent of students responded that they have seriously considered suicide in the last twelve months. Twenty percent of students responded that they have made a plan on how they would attempt suicide in the last twelve months. Eleven percent of students responded that they have attempted suicide in the last twelve months. There were no results from this survey for 2015 in Knox County due to a low response. At the end of the school year, when I requested Will's school records, I had to make the request from the guidance department. When I went to pick them up, I asked about why Will's discipline records were not included and was told those are kept in the principal's office because every child deserves to have a clean slate when they come to the guidance counselor. If only Will had been referred, perhaps he would have realized there was a place at school where he could have a clean record. When I spoke on Monday night, we talked about nine hundred, almost nine hundred thousand dollars a year going to the Leadership Academy. Perhaps we need to use it to train admin and guidance on the best use of our guidance counselors for our students. Thank you.
Quick forum on this agenda item, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. We had a motion made by Mr. Norman and seconded by Ms. Owen. Is there any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries.
Item ten E, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy J-350, student health services as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Norman, seconded by Ms. Owen. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries.
Ten F, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy J-351, physical examinations and immunizations as amended.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Norman, seconded by Ms. Owen. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed. Motion carries.
Ten G, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy J-352, medication as amended.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Norman, seconded by Ms. Owen. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries.
Ten H, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy J-353, acquired immune deficiency syndrome AIDS as amended.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Norman, seconded by Ms. Owen. Any discussion on this item? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries.
Ten I, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy J-354, glucagen administration policy as amended.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Norman, seconded by Ms. Owen. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries.
Ten J, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy J-356, guidelines for managing life-threatening food allergies as amended.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Norman, seconded by Ms. Owen. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed. Motion carries.
Ten K, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy J-357, student communicable diseases as amended.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Norman, seconded by Ms. Owen. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries.
Ten L, approved second reading of new Knox County Board of Education Policy J-358, adrenal insufficiency.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Norman, seconded by Ms. Owen. Ms. Owen?
I just want to remind the board that there is a state board policy in process with adrenal insufficiency and remind us to keep an eye on that so that we can change it soon. Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion on this item? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries.
Ten M, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy J-370, student social services as amended.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Norman, seconded by Ms. Owen. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed. Motion carries.
Ten N, approved second reading of new Knox County Board of Education Policy J-392, students in foster care as amended.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Norman, seconded by Ms. Owen. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries.
Ten O, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy J-400, child abuse and neglect as amended.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Norman, seconded by Ms. Owen. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed. Motion carries.
Ten P, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy J-430, school nutrition program as amended.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Norman, seconded by Ms. Owen. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries.
Ten Q, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy J-490, student performance as amended.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Norman, seconded by Ms. Owen. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries.
Ten R, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy J-510, student vehicles as amended.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Norman, seconded by Ms. Owen. Any discussion on this? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries.
Ten S, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy J-530, awards and scholarships as amended.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Norman, seconded by Ms. Owen. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries.
Ten T, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy J-550, student records as amended.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Norman, seconded by Ms. Owen. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries.
Ten U, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy J-551, student records, annual notification of rights as amended.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Norman, seconded by Ms. Owen. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries.
Ten B has been withdrawn. Ten W, approved first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy I-200, class size as amended.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Norman, seconded by Ms. Owen. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries.
Ten X, approved first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy I-210, textbook selection, distribution, and care as amended.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Norman, seconded by Ms. Owen. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries.
Ten Y, approved first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy I-220, access to electronic media as amended.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Norman, seconded by Ms. Owen. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries.
Ten Z, approved first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy I-231, duplicating copyrighted materials as amended.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Norman, seconded by Ms. Owen. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries.
Ten AA, approved first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy I-242, community instructional resources as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Owen, seconded by Mr. Norman. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed. Motion carries.
Ten BB, approved first reading to rescind Knox County Board of Education Policy I-300, remediation and intervention services.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Owen, seconded by Mr. Norman. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries.
Ten CC, approved first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy I-340, promotion, retention, acceleration as amended.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Owen, seconded by Mr. Norman. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries.
Ten DD, approved first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy I-350, repeating high school courses as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Owen, seconded by Mr. Norman. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries.
Ten EE, approved first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy I-373, graduating with honors or distinction as amended.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Owen, seconded by Mr. Norman. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries.
Ten FF, approved first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy I-381, integration of TCAP scores and student grades as amended.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Owen, seconded by Mr. Norman. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries.
Ten GG, approved first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy I-441, wellness policy, physical activity as amended.
So moved.
Motion made by Ms. Owen, seconded by Mr. Norman. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries.
Ten HH, approved first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy I-450, public charter schools as amended.
So moved.
Motion made by Ms. Owen, seconded by Mr. Norman. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries.
Ten II was withdrawn. Eleven A, approved State of Tennessee Department of Education Title III immigrant grant for fiscal year 2017-2018 in the amount of twenty-five thousand, five hundred and seventy-one dollars for provision of support for immigrant families.
So moved.
Motion made by Ms. Roundtree.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Norman. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries.
Eleven B, approved memorandum of understanding with Great Schools Partnership for a fiscal year 2018, Knox County Schools Teacher-Preneur Grant, up to one hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
So moved.
Motion made by Ms. Roundtree, seconded by Mr. Norman. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries.
Eleven C, approved application and receipt of grant from Great Schools Partnership in the amount of ten thousand dollars in contract with Great Smoky Mountains Institute at Tremont for Longsdale Elementary School's fifth-grade trip November twenty-ninth through December one, 2017 at a cost of thirteen thousand, eight hundred and seventy dollars using the grant and other donations.
Okay, motion made by Ms. Fugit, seconded by Ms. Deathridge. Any discuss- I'm sorry. Oh, Ms. Horn, okay. Correct that. Okay, any discussion on that? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries.
Eleven D, approved application and receipt of City of Knoxville Parks and Recreation Challenge Grant in the amount of two thousand dollars designated for improvements to the playground field area at Dogwood Elementary School.
So moved.
Motion made by Ms. Roundtree, seconded by Ms. Owen. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed. Motion carries.
Eleven E, approved application and receipt of funds from a Crystal Foundation grant in the amount of one thousand dollars for Carter Middle School designated for the purchase and repair of band instruments.
Motion made by Mr. McMillan, seconded by Mr. Norman. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries.
Twelve A, approved term contract with East Tennessee Fence Company and Stanley Fencing to provide fencing installation services and supplies for up to five hundred thousand dollars annually as needed.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Fugit, seconded by Mr. Norman. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries.
Twelve B, approved term contract with Bonnet's Flooring to provide carpet tile installation services for up to three hundred thousand dollars annually as needed.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Norman, seconded by Ms. Horn. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries.
Twelve C, approved term contract with Consolidated Electronic Systems Incorporated and Gallaher and Associates to provide intercom installation and repair services up to one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars annually as needed.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Norman, seconded by Ms. Horn. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries.
Thirteen A, approved fiscal year 2018 budget line item transfers for the General Purpose Fund in the amount of one hundred and eighty-eight thousand, three hundred and seventy-three dollars.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Norman, seconded by Ms. Horn. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries.
Thirteen B, approved appointment of Knox County Board of Education Special Question Committee for collaborative conferencing.
So moved.
Motion made by Ms. Fugit, seconded by Ms. Roundtree. Any discussion on that? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries.
Thirteen C, discussion and possible action regarding the Leadership Academy memorandum of agreement.
Motion?
No, there's no motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, Ms. Fugit.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Since it's an item for discussion, I would like to take personal privilege this month. We are not, it's not an emergency. We don't have to make a decision till next month. And seeing as how we got so much information all throughout the day on the academy, and the superintendent said last week he would like to present us some ideas next month, I'd like to give him time to do that before we vote.
Okay. Ms. Fugit has asked for personal privilege, which according to the board policy will be granted. And all this means is the courtesy the board was extending to notify UT will not take place, and this item will be placed on the December agenda. Oh, excuse me. Oh, you're waiting on the, Ms. Roundtree. Help me.
Item thirteen D is approve rezoning recommendation for portion of Hardin Valley Academy Zone to Farragut High School. Ms. Roundtree just brought to my attention that the memorandum attached does not have the map showing the zone. So I'm not sure if that's important, Mr. Oaks.
Mr. Oaks, Russ?
Yeah, the amount may not be attached. We can provide that, but there is a verbal description of what the boundaries are in the memorandum that is attached within the recommendation.
Okay, did we have a mo- did we have a first, or did we have a motion? Okay. Okay, seconded by Ms. Hill. Ms. Roundtree, someone wants to speak to that?
Yes, Madam Chair. We have one speaker signed up to speak to this item. Louise Pavlin.
Oh, she wants to.
Yes.
I have a question.
Okay, so you're gonna wait until public forum? Is that correct, Ms. Pavlin? Okay, then we'll go to Ms. Fugit.
I just have a question. Is there an urgency that we do it this month? Since we don't have the map, I mean, the verb, I'm just asking. Maybe, it may be fine for, but that means citizens haven't seen the map, and not everybody may be able to figure out the boundaries by the.
There's not, in my mind, an urgency. It's just to give people fair information and fair time that we do this. The map was used at all of our public meetings as well. So it has, it has been online in connection with those meetings for some time.
Okay, I just, okay, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion made by Ms. Horn, seconded by Ms. Hill. Is there any further discussion before we vote? Okay, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed. Motion carries.
Item thirteen E, approved resolution to amend letter grading of Tennessee schools.
So moved.
Motion made by Ms. Roundtree, seconded by Ms. Fugit. Any discussion, Ms. Roundtree?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would just like to point out to the board, in the final whereas, before the now there, therefore, the language has been changed to more accurately reflect. um, the language has been changed to more accurately reflect um, what went on in the, in the legislature last year. So, it's been changed to state that the House considered House Bill four forty-nine to amend the previous legislation to assign an overall performance label which aligns to the district determination rather than a single letter grade. And the reason that I didn't make that change is because, um, if you just go and look for that House bill reference, it references RTI and this was an amendment that had been brought forth but then did not pass. So, that's why the language has been changed. And on the, um, you'll see attached to the agenda is also the memorandum that shows the language.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Okay, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, motion carries.
Thirteen F, approve resolution in opposition to the use of TCAP data for teacher evaluations and student grades for school year two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen.
So moved.
Motion made by Ms. Roundtree, seconded by Ms. Owen, discussion, Ms. Roundtree?
I meant to send this to Terry after Ms. Fugit's friendly amendment, so I will, uh, or discussion on Monday. So, I'm open to, um, feedback if we want to take out those last two whereas, or since I didn't have the revised copy up here, um, we can move forward with it as it is. I'm, I'm open to feedback about that while we're considering it.
Ms. Fugit.
Thank you. If you, if you are amenable, I would like to make a friendly amendment that we take out the last whereas. I am fine with the one before about teachers don't get TCAPs, but just that last whereas, the American Educational Research Center released a statement. If we, if we could take that out, I would appreciate it.
Do I second her amendment? No.
You have to agree to a friendly amendment.
Yes, I agree to your friendly amendment, so I think that we're, we're.
We're squared away to.
We're squared away, I think.
To vote?
Yes, yes ma'am.
Okay. Seeing no other lights on, we'll vote then with this friendly amendment and for this resolution. All in favor say aye. Aye, all appo- all opposed, motion carries.
Item thirteen G, approve resolution in opposition to the use of TCAP data for grades three through five.
So moved.
Motion made by Ms. Roundtree, seconded by Ms. Fugit, and Ms. Roundtree wants to begin our discussion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to, um, just briefly remind everyone, we talked about this on Monday, but that this resolution is asking the General Assembly to change that section of Tennessee code, um, henceforth, not just for a one-time. No TCAP scores being used for the kids' grades in grades three, three, five, so, yeah. So, I just wanted to make sure everybody, we were all on the same page, so, thank you all.
Any further discussion on this resolution? Okay, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, motion carries.
And going back to item nine, uh, C seven, that was removed from consent agenda, approve Knoxville Convention Center Use Agreement for Teacher of the Year Banquet on February twenty-second, two thousand eighteen at a cost of fifteen thousand two hundred and fifty dollars using coupon book and sponsorship funds.
I moved.
Motion made by Ms. Roundtree, seconded by Ms. Fugit, discussion on this item, Ms. Owen?
Um, like, like we discussed on Monday, I don't think it's appropriate use of our coupon book money. Um, students should not be doing fundraising and then those students' funds going to district-wide recognitions. I think that is a really, a really poor use of their fundraising monies and I think we need to find some other way to pay for this recognition. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Mr. McMillan, I believe you may have bit, beaten Ms. Fugit by a second, so.
Well, let her, let her speak, I, I didn't like.
Now, go ahead, Mr. McMillan.
Um, I was just gonna say that, that I agree with what Ms. Owen is saying. And I guess my concern is that I, I'm not in any way opposed to having some kind of celebration to, to honor these people. Uh, but I think that somebody, and I'm not pointing any fingers at, at any one individual, but we've known about this, that, that it wasn't gonna be a corporate sponsor. And then suddenly, when the issue is raised Monday night, we act like it's new or that we haven't, uh, really thought about that, that that might upset some people if you're using coupon books. I had one lady mention to me, she said, if they do that, and, 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 you know, it doesn't matter whether you do it with part of it or, or what, she'll say, I'll never buy another coupon book. Now, you know, she might change her mind, I don't know, but, but that's how strong some people feel about it. You know, if we, if, I, I have to believe that if we had begun early enough and pursued it, that we could have found some sponsors to, to have taken care of the situation, 'cause it, it's not something that developed just in thirty days. We've known about it for, for a little while. And, uh, my problem with this is, yes, I understand, as I believe it was Ms. Fugit pointed out on Monday night, the need for the contract and everything, well, you know, I, I don't intend to support it because if we don't find the corporate people, then, then we're hung with it, we being the school system, and that's the only place that we can probably find the funds. And they may come up with it, they may not. But I think i- if you have made a determination and it should have, uh, there, there should have been some checking going on once immediately following the loss of the corporate sponsor from the previous year. And once it was determined that, that that was in trouble, that you weren't having any success with it, assuming that somebody was, was actually pursuing it, then there should have been, uh, looking at a, a, a change of venue or, or, or somewhat a scaled-down version. And I'm not, I'm not saying that they shouldn't honor as many people as, as they do. But it's my understanding that we're planning for five hundred people, that's what the contract says, but yet only one teacher from each school. And we have, what, ninety-something schools? So, one from each school, and if they bring one guest, but they're entitled to bring two guests. And then, you know, I guess the, the principal comes from a school and maybe that person's spouse, and I guess maybe that's where we get up to four or five hundred. You know, and I just, I just think that, you know, I don't have any problem with that as long as it's a, as you have a corporate sponsor. But if, if we're gonna have to, uh, come up with the, with the funds and use it out of the coupon book, I think it should be definitely, I, I don't think coupon books should be used at all. Anyway.
Well, I will say before I call, um, call on Ms. Fugit, is that I know that at the school I taught at, there was a Teacher of the Year for the primary grades and a Teacher of the Year for the intermediate grades. So, sometimes there are a Teacher of the Year for special areas. So, sometimes at schools, I was just explaining, so sometimes at schools you will have more than one Teacher of the Year based on how large the school is and how they divide that out, so.
Would, would one guest not be sufficient? If you had two or three from, from each school?
To my knowledge, that's what's been done, but somebody else in.
I mean, I don't know about it, I'm just asking the question, it just seemed a little crazy to me.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Fugit.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, a couple of questions that I've thought about since, um, Monday night, sorry I didn't ask them then. Um, do we know what percentage needs to be paid for out of coupon books of the total bill? I mean, we say out of two funding sources, is it five percent out of coupons or is it fifty percent or is it a hundred percent? And then my second question is, does this have to be signed tonight? Can we not, I, I mean, I'm happy to take privilege on that one and move it a month and let somebody, we don't have to, but I'm just wondering, if there's no sense of urgency, can we postpone this and let somebody, now that the community knows we may not have a teacher's banquet, banquet if we don't have a corporate sponsor, maybe somebody will step up and be the corporate sponsor.
Dr. Davis, do you want to answer that or Ms. Harrington?
I think at this particular point in terms of how much we have towards that banquet, I think it's about five thousand dollars is what we have right now towards that banquet of, uh, the total cost, I think it's fifteen thousand.
Okay, Ms. Fugit.
So, my second question, how long will Mary hold the convention center for you without a signed contract?
I won't have to defer, I'm not sure as to how long they would hold it. I think we've sort of tried to delay it as long as possible, so I'm not sure how much longer it can be held.
Okay.
In the contract, it says five hundred dollars payable by November twenty-seventh.
Yeah. So, we could change our motion to say we authorize the spending of five hundred dollars to reserve it with the right that we can cancel it and only lose five hundred dollars if we can't find corporate sponsors. I mean, that's what the holding fee is. I mean, I'm looking for a solution here that helps us hold a space, but make sure that we either find a cheaper way to do it or find the corporate sponsors, 'cause I'm just looking for a compromise.
Okay.
I see some head nodding if I made that in a fancy.
Thank you, let's let Ms. Hill speak to it and then we'll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, just for information per, uh, purposes, I know that, um, um, one of my schools, perhaps two last year, had actually five uh, awards that were given for Teacher of the Year. So, um, to, to go with the ninety schools times one or even times two is, um, is a low, a very low number. Um, uh, Dr. Davis, what was the total, uh, that was raised last year roughly, just roughly on coupon books?
I will, on that particular figure, I'll defer to, um, Ms. Delaney in terms of the exact amount, do you hear that?
Carrie.
I'm sorry, Ms. Whit.
Okay, Ms. Whit.
Um, last year we raised, the money going to, toward the schools was one point, a little over one point three million. So, that's the eight dollars and eighty-three cents that goes back to the schools themselves. That does not count the dollar seventeen that's kept to cover cost of running the campaign.
Okay, so, one point.
So, we sold a hundred and fifty, a little, a hundred and fifty-one thousand books, so one point five million.
All right, so, um, uh, help me, Mr. Spencer, fifteen thousand dollars, oh, he's not here, of one point five million is. No, I'm talking about the, the, uh, cost for the, um, banquet. Fifteen thousand dollars out of the one point five million is. Point. Come on, Mr. Thomas, your, your finance background, come on, somebody here. A tenth of a percent.
I don't have my calculator, Garrett or Joe back there, he's got you, he's got.
It looks like one hundredth of a percent.
Thank you. Uh, I just, um, uh, personally will support this. I have no issue at all spending that for, for those, uh, board members that have been to those banquets in the past. They are a wonderful celebration and, um, uh, in the big, uh, in the big picture is a, just a very, very minute amount of money to spend to celebrate our teachers.
Okay, Ms. Owen.
I'd like to point out that that fifteen hundred, um, fifteen thousand is also fifteen hundred coupon books. So, fifteen hundred times that children sold a book for their school not to give away. That's important and that's important to parents. And it's important when we look at fifteen thousand dollars is more than what any elementary school could raise in, last year in my district for playground equipment. So, that's a really significant number. I realize we're stretching that out over our entire district. It's not the amount of money that's the problem. It's that children raise this money for use in their schools. And children are not using this money and that's not right.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Owen, Ms. Dethridge.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, brought up a good point and that is, children did raise the money, but I think if we ask the children if they want to do something for their teachers through the coupon book, I would think that they would not have as much problem with it as we do. Because most kids love their teachers and if they think that a portion of the coupon book sale goes towards recognizing celebrations and celebrating their teachers, I would think they may not have a real big issue with it. And if, maybe we need to just ask the kids. But, um, I, I understand what you're saying, I agree with what you're saying, it's not something that we want to do on a regular basis, but I still, I think that the, most students would not have a problem with doing something if it makes, makes that something good happen for their teachers in the classroom, because they always hear something about stress and stuff and this will be an opportunity to discern all the good things that go, and I think they'd be happy.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Fugit.
Thank you, I just, I just want to clarify this, the coupon book money that we're, that we would be using is of the one dollar and seventeen cents per book that goes back to the school system to use as it, at its discretion for school system projects, functions. So, what I understand is this is a recommendation to use fifteen thousand of the money that comes back to the general fund of the school system out of coupon sales. Am I correct? Can somebody, I'm getting head knock, head nods in the affirmative, okay, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Owen.
Can we get some additional information on how much that money was and how much of that money went to, um, other things? I think we don't have that information.
Ms. Whit, do you have that information?
So, last year of the dollar seventeen, I understood quick math, of a hundred and fifty-one thousand seven hundred and sixty-seven books, a hundred and seventeen, a hundred and seventy-seven thousand five hundred and sixty-seven dollars comes back to cover the cost of the campaign and other support events throughout the year.
And how is that money used?
Um, it goes toward, uh, administration of the campaign for incentives and things like that that help us celebrate the kids.
Can we get a breakdown of that sometime?
The, yeah. Yes, we can.
When, like now or like?
No, you can't get it right now, obviously.
Okay. Yes, Ms. Fugit, okay, Ms. Whit, just stay close by, Ms. Fugit.
Thank you, I, I would like to offer a substitute motion that we authorize the schools, the superintendent or the mayor who ever has to sign this for us to spend five hundred dollars to reserve our space at the convention center, but we're not necessi- and we can lose that if we don't get it fully funded. And I, I'm just trying to get us to hold the space, that's the urgency. And then we can get more information on how we're going to pay for it. So, that's my substitute motion.
I second that.
Thank you.
Okay. Motion, subs- I'm so. Uh, Ms. Roundtree did it. Substitute motion made by Ms. Fugit and then Ms. Dethridge, would you like to speak to the substitute motion?
No, it has nothing to do with the substitute motion.
Oh, Ms. Horn.
I, I think that's a good substitute motion and I, my concern is that if we use coupon book monies for this now that it will become what we do and I think that this is a great event for some of our corporate partners to sponsor. So, I do hope that, that we can get that sponsorship in place because this is an important event for our, our school system. So, thank you for working on that.
Okay, any further discussion on this? We have a substitute motion made by Ms. Fugit that we authorized to pay the five hundred dollars, seconded by Ms. Roundtree. Seeing no other lights, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed? Okay. Okay, Ms. Hill opposes the substitute motion. Motion carries.
Oh, Madam, Madam Chair, public forum.
Roundtree.
Sorry. Uh, our first public forum speaker is. Our first public forum speaker is Louise Pavlin.
Hi, Louise Pavlin, Knox County. Board members, Superintendent Thomas, I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you today. I would like to thank the board for your support of Superintendent Thomas's recommendation regarding the rezoning of the northwest section of Farragut, back to Farragut High School. I'm especially appreciative of the generous grandfathering for families who have dedicated their time, talents, and energies to Harden Valley Academy. Those families deserve to remain with the school to which they are clearly dedicated. I'm happy to have most of the Farragut community reunited as well. I am grateful for the tone interim Superintendent Buzz Thomas set when the rezonings to accommodate Harden Valley and Gibbs Middle were discussed. I appreciated the continuity of that effort from Superintendent Thomas. I owe a debt of gratitude to Susan Horn for being engaged and supportive throughout this process. Finally, thank you, Russ Oaks, for being present, willing to listen, and being available when there were questions. Also, I would like to thank the board for their willingness to review and update all of the Knox County schools' policies. It was a big undertaking that required a lot of reading, a lot of research, and time spent getting educated. Specifically, I'm very supportive of the change to the graduation with honors and distinction to include designation to honor tri-star scholars. I understand that this law was enacted by the state legislature. It is good to honor students who earn Capstone Industry Certification. It takes dedication to remain with the CTE's track throughout high school. Those students who do deserve to be honored for it. Finally, thank you, Ms. Roundtree. I truly appreciate your efforts fighting for Knox County public school students and teachers. As a parent who is passionate about the value of a good public school education, I'm alarmed by what I see happening at the state and national levels. Our state legislature needs to understand the negative impact its policies are having on our classrooms locally. You are fighting the good fight. Thank you all.
Our next speaker is Persephone Webb.
Good evening. My name is Persephone Webb. I'm a member of the Knox County community and a representative of the Voices for Trans Youth Campaign. I would like to start by thanking this board for dropping the proposal to remove the harassment protections for LGBT students and teachers during the last month's board meeting. Removing gender and sexual orientation from the list of classes protected against harassment would have been backwards for local civil rights and would have only exposed an already at-risk population to even more differential treatment and abuse. So thank you for listening to the community and voting to retain existing harassment protections for LGBT students and teachers. With that said, there's still so much work to be done in order to make our schools safer and more supportive for LGBT students and teachers. For instance, even though KCS policy prohibits anti-LGBT harassment in theory, in practice, there is widespread failure to prevent, to both prevent and intervene in harassment and bullying of LGBT students. This is shamefully unacceptable, and we must put in the hard work necessary to fix this problem. Additionally, our harassment policies are not the only place in KCS policy where LGBT student rights and protections need to be addressed. Last month's Board of Education agenda included review of Knox County Schools' equal educational opportunities policy and equal employment opportunities policy. Neither of these policies explicitly guarantee equal opportunities to LGBT students and teachers. Voices for Trans Youth submitted proposals to add gender and sexual orientation to both EEO policies, thereby guaranteeing LGBT students equal access to education and LGBT teachers equal employment rights. However, board members declined our request for meetings to discuss the EEO policies, and our proposals were not given any consideration at last month's BL and committee meetings. The equal employment opportunities policy was approved by this board without the addition of gender and sexual orientation, while the equal educational opportunities policy was sent back to committee and then dropped from the gen, the agenda altogether. This was a missed opportunity to strengthen protections for a segment of the KCS community who is unjustly and dangerously underprotected in both policy and practice in schools. We do not know why this board declined to consider our EEO proposals. Please understand that it is absolutely imperative that all KCS non-discrimination policies be amended to explicitly include gender and sexual orientation as protected classes. This board has a duty to take action to protect targeted and at-risk students and teachers. At the most basic level, this means written policy protections which dictate that LGBT students and teachers cannot be treated differently because of their gender or sexual orientation, and which guarantee that LGBT students and teachers have equal access to all of the educational and employment opportunities available in Knox County schools. Moving forward, we ask this board to be open to engaging and meaningful dialogue with us about the struggles of LGBT students and teachers and policy changes that can help alleviate those struggles. Please work with us so that together we can make Knox County schools safer and more supportive for LGBT students and teachers. We are committed to putting in the time and effort necessary to produce real change in our schools, and we sincerely hope you are too. Thank you.
Public forum, move adjourned.
Ms. Roundtree, move to adjourn. Do I have a second? Seconded by Ms. Fugit, all in favor say aye. Aye. Motion adj, meeting adjourned.